All right, I'd like to welcome everyone out to our Leighton City work meeting for February 18th. We're starting at 5:32. And the first item up on our agenda is our council reports. So council, do you have anything you'd like to share with one another?
Leighton is participating in a well-being survey that is being done by the University of, or Utah State University along with the assistance of the Utah League of Cities and Towns. We're one of 29 cities that are participating. And if you will go to the city's website, there's a link to take the survey. It's for Leighton residents 18 and over. We have until next Wednesday, the 25th, to take it. But it's one we really need everybody to participate in if they could. And I'm going to make a challenge to my four council members who are of the male gender, if you're listening.
Oh, wait a minute.
We got some preliminary results, and we have a lot of women filling out the survey, but not enough men. So if I'm going to make a challenge, if you guys would go on and fill out the survey, it would be very much appreciated, because I'm sure you're all over 18, except maybe Zach. But, no.
Boom, boom, boom.
He feels like, yeah, I still think you're in junior high, Zach. But, oh, well. But, no, if you guys would do that, it's going to provide us, the city as well as Davis behavioral health, and it's not just health questions. It's a survey too about how we feel about living within our city. So I think it's really a good one that we get on board and do. Other than that, that's it.
Zach or Clint, do you want to talk about the league, their essay contest, maybe? One of you guys?
Sure. I think, before I announce here. So Clint, myself, and Gary have obviously been involved in the discussions about some of the bills that have been through committee and on the floor. We just got word that Representative, let me just pull it up here, sorry.
Paul Ray or Ward?
Ward.
Okay.
Representative Ward's bill, that we just barely got the brand-new version of it, and the league's looking at it, and I think the league's actually comfortable enough to move to a neutral position on it, which is a far cry from what they were before. And so that's the current status of that one. I actually listened in yesterday to a bill based on rioting and kind of upping the criminal sanctions for people who are disturbing the peace. And there was a specific provision in there that the city, myself, I guess, and talked to Gary a little bit about it, were worried about waiving immunity for allowing individual actors to be able to sue the city if they felt like the city wasn't doing enough to protect their private property. But that portion of it, the governmental immunity portion of it, was actually removed during the committee meeting. So, and it passed out of committee. And so who knows if that actually will make it to the floor, and if it will, or if it will actually be passed. But the concern that we had as a city about putting our police officers in a situation where they might have to decide, do I protect this person's property, or do I protect this person's life? It put them in a little bit difficult position, so I was happy to see that that was removed. And then we're just keeping track, keeping tabs. And Gary keeps us up to date on one of the things that we know. And so, once we get information, we'll be happy to pass it along to you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one, just one? What's going on with the inspector deal?
HB 98.
Yeah, HB 98. I was going to say that, but I had no clue what you're talking about.
May I respond to that? So, we've been working with the HBA, Home Builders Association, to amend that. And I got a first draft yesterday morning. Unfortunately, legislative research is really, really behind. And so the second portion of it, which is the design portion, I haven't gotten yet. But the bill as drafted takes out all of the preemption, leaves it pretty much the way that it is right now, which is you've got 14 days to do your plan review, you've got three days to do your inspection. If you don't do your plan review within 14 days, penalty's the same. They can proceed forward, just based on the engineer's stamp. Three days to do the inspection. If you don't do your inspection within three days, the city can still hire somebody to do that inspection, or the developer, the builder, can actually go and hire somebody to do the inspection for them. I've checked with our building inspectors, and I actually talked to the Building Inspector Association, and they're all going, "We can do that. That's something we can do." They narrowed it down to just single-family and duplex. Duplexes are kind of like looking at a single-family home. No commercial, no multifamily. And the building permit fees are still paid in full by the developer, and so the builder. New definition of what a building inspector is includes a definition that includes insurance that a building inspector now must have, because he's not operating under the city's zoning, or, excuse me, immunity. No immunity for the building inspector. So Doppel's going to have to put some new rules in play to deal with the insurance piece. I don't know anybody that would do this unless they were absolutely compelled to by a city that really was violating the rules. But it's been narrowed way, way back. I'm very, very confident, because we've talked to both the leadership in the House and the leadership in the Senate, that this is the version of the bill that will pass once it comes out. So right now, the bill that's up in front of everybody is the old 98, which preempts everything. We should still really actively engage against that. But I believe by tomorrow afternoon, we should have a completed draft of 98 and be able to get that to you, show it to you. And it'll be on the positive side, yeah. So, a lot of work, a lot of talking, a lot of arm-twisting.
A lot of late nights, early mornings.
A lot of late nights, yes. But thank you, and appreciate our team up there very, very much. Thank you, Mayor, as well.
Madam Mayor, and to Councilman Thomas, we all got that email yesterday about it, which, you know, was a little preemptive, which is why, you know, we've been talking about, it's kind of difficult to fight, all guns blazing about a bill that you don't even know what it is. And so, you know, I think Clint and I talked yesterday, and our idea was, let's wait and see what the bill actually looks like before we make a motion or act as a city, you know? And obviously, that's just something for us to discuss, but we don't even know what that is yet, so.
Well, we'll rely on Mr. Crane to keep us informed on that, since he's the one pretty much doing most of the negotiation, I believe. Or a lot of it, anyway, on behalf of not only us, but the league. So thank you, Gary, for all your service there. Okay, anybody else want to report on anything? Okay, let's continue, then. At this hour, we get to engage in a fun, no, I won't. It's our actually training moment, brought to you by Mr. Gary Crane.
Thank you very, very much.
I have no idea what the topic is today, so you're lucky.
I appreciate what they're talking about, and I'm sorry you're all going to be disappointed after it's all done. Okay, let's go.
It's not the first time.
Nice.
That wasn't it.
That wasn't it. I'm sorry.
I think all you guys are filling your oats all of a sudden.
These two, right here.
I'm drinking this water.
So.
Oh, weighing the evidence.
I hope this works. If it does, we're in good shape. If it doesn't, we'll just.
You wing it.
Wing it. You're right. Let's see, oh, it does, look at that. So, just, one of my most painful experiences in a courtroom occurred early in my career, when I was sitting at a table, and on the other side was a very experienced lawyer, and we just, we were doing cross-examination, and the other lawyer I was sitting with was supposed to be helping me, because I was brand-new. And you know that when you make an objection in a courtroom, you have to very, very quickly back it with the reason for the objection. And so, the witness was going on and on, and I was focused on what I was writing down in my paper, and the other lawyer bumps me, and he says, "That's hearsay. That's clearly hearsay." So I jump up and I say, "Your Honor, that's hearsay. That's clearly hearsay." And the judge looked at me like, you know, "Which rock have you been hiding under for all these years of law school that you supposedly attended?" The guy hadn't even spoken yet. There is no such thing as hearsay when nobody speaks. And so I had to eat crow, sit down, and then the judge had me come up afterwards, and he taught me what hearsay was. Hearsay, you've seen it on TV, right? What is hearsay? Hearsay is when I use what somebody else has said. Okay, so I heard from Steve Garside that if you put tanning salons in, you know what happens in tanning salons, right? You know? And so I'm using what somebody else said outside of the forum that we're in to establish the truth of what I'm trying to demonstrate, of the point I'm trying to demonstrate. Yeah, so.
Zach, Clint, yeah.
So, there you go. Yeah, objection hearsay. So you're probably going to do that in the middle of my presentations from now on, whenever I hit that piece. But the key is this, how much weight do you think a judge gives hearsay when a judge hears hearsay evidence? I mean, they're the ones that receive it, and they're the ones that are supposed to be making a decision. How much weight do you think they give something where somebody says, "Well, I heard so-and-so say this," you know? Heavy, light? Light. Mayor's going zippo. That's exactly right. Very, very light. Very, very light. The reason I'm pointing this out is because, you know, you're not judges, but oftentimes you sit in a position that's very, very close to doing what a judge does. That is, having to weigh the evidence that comes before you. Remember, we talked about the different hats that you wear? And when you make a land use decision, you're passing a law. And when you pass a law, all you need to do is make sure that you have a rational basis for passing that law, and the rational basis has to have something to do with planning. And you've got to make sure that when you pass that law, and you point out that it has something to do with planning, that you mention what that is on the record, so that you've got a record of why you passed that law. But it's pretty easy, the passage of laws and the legislative part of it's pretty easy, isn't it? Because you can have any reason. You can have been elected to get rid of every convenience store in Leighton, because that's the reason you were elected. Is that a good planning, or is that a good planning reason for passing a zoning law that outlaws all convenience stores in Leighton? Probably not. Okay. But if you combine that with a good planning reason, a valid planning reason, like, for example, you decide, you know, "They'll only be acceptable in our city centers, or in this area, or that area, but in all other areas, no, because your master plan says that these things should be located." Then all of a sudden, a potentially invalid decision becomes a valid zoning decision, right? Then you've got your rational basis. And so, weighing the evidence, weighing what comes into you, is extremely important, especially when you're making administrative determinations. Because administrative determinations, a little bit higher standard, substantial evidence. Now, I'm going to tell you what substantial evidence is. When you're listening to somebody stand up here and say, "You know what? I want this use approved." And there's an ordinance that says that if I do this, this, and this, it should be approved. Guess what? You've got what it takes, right? To be able to approve it. If somebody's standing up here and saying, "I want this use approved," and then the next person gets up and says, "Don't approve this use, because kids are going to be killed, and because, you know, the neighborhood's going to go to pot, and because there's going to be crime all over the place." I think we heard that about a dental office once. Do you remember that kind of? Yeah, you're shaking your head, so you can remember that. I never quite thought of a dental office as being a center of crime. But does that sound a lot like what we were talking about a few minutes ago, where you got hearsay, or evidence that should not be given as heavy a consideration as what the actual facts are? For example, looking at, the key question is, is there a sufficient factual basis for it? And so, if I were to come in, and I were to say, the neighbors are to say, "Hey, listen, kids are going to get killed. Predators sit in the parking lots of dental shops, and it's right next to our neighborhood." Okay, so the things that they're saying, you'll pull out of those the things that are relevant. And the things that might be relevant are concerns about traffic, for example. And the thing that would rebut something about traffic would be better, what's better evidence about whether or not that street will handle the adequate traffic? Is it what somebody is saying, somebody else said, the neighbors are all saying that their kids are going to be killed, there's going to be too much traffic on the street? Or would it be a traffic study that you require the developer to do? And he produces that traffic study for you, and a traffic engineer looks at it, and our engineer, there's another source, right, of credible information, is our professionals, the engineers. The city finance director is the expert on finance. The city engineer is the expert on engineering issues. The city planner is the expert on planning issues. Hopefully, the city attorney's somewhere in there, you know, doing something, something reasonable. But the bottom line is, you use those resources to kind of debunk the hearsay part of it, or the evidence that isn't as heavy and isn't as dependable. And there's a great case. It's called Davis County versus Clearfield City. Davis County had a, it was a kind of a group home, is what they wanted approved, and Clearfield City Planning Commission had considered the group home, and then it was appealed to the city council. The planning commission denied it, because if you want anything to pull a bunch of people into a meeting, use a group home. That's the reason we don't have hearings over group homes anymore, because group homes have been essentially preempted by federal law. We have to allow them in our boundaries. But this is back when they didn't. So Davis County's trying to put a group home in, and when they tried to put the group home in, they got everybody and their dog came out and said, "Don't do this. It's going to destroy the neighborhood, it's going to kill us. Listen, all the, you know, all the horrible things that would happen, this, that, and the other thing." And they decided against them. And then the city council, when it was appealed to them, decided against Davis County. And Davis County decided to appeal it to the Court of Appeals. And the Court of Appeals said this, "Neighborhood opposition and unfounded expressions of concern, even though they're nice to hear, are not adequate to be able to make an administrative, an actual administrative, a valid administrative decision." And I wanted to just actually get you the wording, so that you could take a look at it. It says, "Denial of a conditional use permit is arbitrary," and you could just put any type of administrative decision or legislative decision is arbitrary when the reason given are without sufficient factual basis. Consent of the neighboring landowners may not be a criterion for approval of a conditional use permit." And actually, you could extend that to any type of zoning decision. Isn't that true? You don't, how much, how much weight should you give when you've got an audience full of people, and you say, "How many people are in favor of this application being approved? And how many are against this application being approved?" I have seen city councils actually do that. I've seen planning commissions do that. And the answer is, on the scale of the weight that you should give that type of evidence, where would it be? Heavy or light?
Light.
Light, right? That's what the court's saying. It's saying it should be light. Denial of a conditional use must be based on something more concrete than neighborhood opposition and unfounded expressions of concern for public safety and welfare. So what could you do? You could take a look at some actual statistics regarding these homes. And when they actually did look at the actual statistics, there weren't any, there was no increase in crime. You could go to your police chief, who's another expert. Whenever you hear about traffic concerns, you've got your engineer, you've got your police chief, you've got individuals who can give you that information, who can firm up that hearsay evidence and make it actually helpful and valid. Just another, some other examples of stuff you hear, I love it. If all the requirements of the ordinance have been met, you know you're on really safe ground, right? If you can go through and do a checklist yourself of the ordinance, that is the greatest evidence that you can actually use to sustain your decision, your decision. Crime's going to increase in the area? Just that loose statement enough? Or not? Not, right? But what might it do? It might kick up to you the idea that maybe you ought to take a look at that, but a lot of times, it's just, it's just hearsay, right? It's just hearsay, that these things are going to create crime in the area. How about state or federal law prohibiting you from, let's see, I flipped too far. I'll just pick a couple. State or federal law prohibiting you from saying no? That's the group home situation. And so that's probably one of the strongest reasons for making a decision, is there's a law that says you have to make it that way. Right? There's nothing better.
I don't agree with that.
But that's it, okay.
Visiting inspections, sorry.
So, I think you get it, and this is supposed to be just a short presentation, but I think you understand that when you sit up there, you're continually weighing what you're hearing, and you're giving a weight to it. Give the greatest weight to those things that actually have a factual basis or premise to them. When you're doing a zone change, one of the strongest pieces of evidence that the zone change is proper is what?
General plan.
General plan. If all you said was, "We're going to rezone this, because the general plan says that this is the way we should rezone it," that's enough. That will carry any, any day in court. Absolutely any day. That's all you need to say. The other piece of advice, just in finalizing this, would be, make sure you create a good record. And thank you, you do that quite often. This council will give their reasons for what they're voting on. And giving your reasons for what you're voting on creates a great record. And if we ever have to do, we do have to go to court because of a decision that you've made, I can pull from what you've said, your reasons for voting the way that you did. What's even better than that is if the person making the motion, after the motion's made, you know, the mayor calls for a motion, and then the mayor calls for a second to the motion, and then the mayor always calls for a discussion on the motion. That discussion piece is extremely important, because that's where I'm going to look first, and the court's going to look first, for your reasons for the decision that was made, if that motion succeeds. Is that little thing called discussion? They're going to listen to what each member of the council said about this thing. And so that's a great place to build your record and make your findings, or give your evidence, the evidence of things that caused you to vote the way that you did. Questions?
So, in making the motion, though, if we state that it's consistent with the general plan, haven't we?
Done everything you need to do.
So is that the better place to do it, or leave it for the discussion?
If it's that simple, the person that makes the motion certainly should give their reasons for making the motion, and that's enough. And the entire council, if you agree with that, you don't need to say any more. One thing I've noticed, though, is a lot of times, it is a good idea also to incorporate, if part of the reason you're making the motion the way you are, to incorporate staff's recommendations. And, for example, in a site plan review, where you've actually got conditions that you've imposed, to impose staff's recommendations is a good thing to do in a motion, although I can always argue that that was in front of you, and that those were incorporated by your reference to them. But that's always a good thing to do. That's a great question. So, the person making the motion, if they summed it up for all of you, don't worry about it. All of you don't have to say the same thing. It's a good, good point. Any other questions?
Point of clarification. Knowing that, as a governing body here, we follow Robert's Rules of Order, but we don't have to be precise to Robert's Rules of Order. And a lot of that discussion has taken place prior to the motion, which, that's fine, right? Because that's basically still stating maybe your opinion, or how you feel, or whatever. So it isn't likely I have to call for discussion once the second's been made and have them restate it, because we've already captured it. Is that correct?
That's correct. Utah courts say that they will sift through the minutes of a meeting and find out why you voted the way you did, and I can pull all that out of what you've said. But the better thing is, if you don't think it's been said, and you don't think your reasons have been expressed, make sure you put it in that discussion period. You don't have to, but, because I can pull it out. But please do, if there's a reason that has not been expressed that you, you know, that you've seen during the course of it. So that would be, that would be good. Thank you. Any questions on that?
Just, I appreciate what you said, but sometimes let us know when the fun part is.
There is no fun part in law.
Thanks for weighing in, Dave.
Yeah. According to the general plan, it talks about lawyers and how they should speak and stuff, so I just help.
So do the scriptures, but they don't say very good things about them.
Hey, thanks for wiping that down without being asked.
You're welcome. I did one thing right.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Okay, we'll move on to item number three, which Chad Wilkinson will share with us, the rezone request and plat amendment.
All right. I can. All right. Whoops. I'm going to skip through a few of those things that'll come up later at council. Mayor and council, this is an item, a request for a couple of different applications. The first is a rezone from CH and R18 to CTH. The second is plat amendment. These go together. I'll present the information together, but during the city council meeting, there will need to be two separate motions, one related to the plat amendment, one related to the rezone request. Just as a way of context, by way of context, the property that we're talking about is here on South Fort Lane, 471 South Fort Lane. You can see that approximate location with the red dot on the screen. Here's an aerial photo showing the property in question. There are three zones that currently exist, well, excuse me, there are two zones that exist, and there's the additional request for the CTH. But you've got a portion of the property that's CH zoning, up here at the front along Fort Lane. There's an in-between parcel that's zoned currently R18, and then a parcel that's within the existing Rosewood subdivision that fronts on Kimball and Kimball Drive. And there's also a parcel that is, an adjacent parcel that's part of the subdivision amendment, but not part of the zone change. This is a little bit of a complicated moving parts type of an application, so I want to just take just a brief minute and explain in some detail what the proposal is. Picture's worth a thousand words, so I'm going to try to let that be worth those words. The white outlined area is the area that's proposed for CTH zoning, includes that front piece that's currently got CH zoning, and that parcel that's behind with the R18. You can see the other portion of the property, outlined in red, the subject of our subdivision amendment. These are two lots in the existing Rosewood subdivision. You can see there's a little triangle piece of property that projects into this larger parcel behind this existing home. In order for that to kind of create a straight line and a more developable, without any kind of weird intrusions from the adjacent property, the applicant is proposing to amend that subdivision boundary. There'll be a change that will allow for parcel 11072007 to maintain the minimum lot size for the zone, which is R18, this is 8,000 square foot lot size. And we'll still provide another R18 lot here that meet that minimum lot size dimensions and standards. So, in a nutshell, again, this is the proposed zone change. The area along Kimball Drive is not proposed for a zone change. It will remain R18, but it is proposed for a subdivision amendment to facilitate, again, the correct size for the correct size for this parcel 007 as this parcel changes hands, this little triangle to clean up that development line. It is consistent with the general plan for this area. It's a mixed-use corridor. This property is identified within that mixed-use corridor. CTH was the zoning that was selected in this case for a number of reasons, but it does have some good standards that require a certain amounts of open space that the applicant has designed into their conceptual design. We're not here to consider a specific design tonight. We're here to consider the zone change request. Again, this is that summary of what that looks like in those various parcels. This is a copy of the subdivision plat amendment. You can see we're making that what is now going to be lot 101 a little bit bigger. And then that will, again, allow both of those lots to meet that minimum lot size. With that, the planning commission did review this request. They have recommended approval of this zone change request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. The zone change and the subdivision amendment. Thank you.
Okay, council, any questions?
Just a quick question, Chad. On that southern of the two lots, are the setbacks still good after that new line's drawn on that existing building?
On the existing Rosewood subdivision?
Yeah.
They'll be better. Yeah, that'll actually make, yeah. It actually moves that property line to the north. So it actually will create those even more setback there. Yep. Thank you. Any other questions?
So I have a couple. Not too long ago, there was the assembly of the property on Main and Fort Lane, where they kind of intersect where the trailer sales and all that was, with the idea of the commercial highway. And we're shown a really nice picture of what, you know, potential could be there. Is there a concern that this is being taken out of the CH? Or was there ever a vision that that whole area be part of that CH or just that west side of the road?
It's actually the opposite. The vision for the general plan is that that area will be mixed-use. We're not really sure why that property was changed to CH. It's never been used commercially. You know, I don't know if that was something that they had hoped would result in some commercial use there. But the general plan and part of that previous application there on a little bit further south is that eventually that'll transition itself to mixed-use. And part of that was to try to get those properties consolidated into a parcel that was big enough to do a viable mixed-use development. So that, this entire area is earmarked for mixed-use development, which includes, you know, a variety of things, can include a variety of things, commercial and residential. But yeah, this one, that particular CTH, it's a little bit of an anomaly. It sits in the middle of existing single-family residential. Never has really been a viable commercial parcel. And particularly with the commercial development that's occurred a little bit further to the north, it's even less viable for commercial use and makes sense to be part of a mixed-use zone. In this case, condo townhome zone that can allow for some residential development.
Okay. And then is there a reason why a development agreement's not being done with the rezone?
It's consistent with the general plan, so there wasn't any need for us to do any kind of development agreement.
And the CTH is good enough for design and all of that to hold them to those?
Yeah, CTH has some standards specific to open space minimums and design standards. That was part, and we'll talk about that in just a minute, actually, but that was part of some revisions to the CTH zone that were adopted several months ago.
Okay. And then I just have, it's kind of a question on the two, there are two different engineer reports in here. One from the 22nd of December and one from the 12th of January. And they're two different engineers. So Shannon stated back in December that she felt like the calculations that were given in the acreage was significantly less than what was being proposed. She had listed it was showing at 3.05 acres and they calculated at 1.635 acres. So I was kind of curious why the difference there. And then when you go on into Elizabeth's report, in number three and four on her report, let me pull those up really quick. I don't quite understand what she's saying on that. So she's talking about lots seven and 44 and 46. And we're talking about lots 101 and 102. I'm kind of confused.
Yeah, so in order to change the plat, they have to assign new numbers. The old numbers are lot seven and I think lot eight. I'd have to look that up really quick. But anytime they do a subdivision amendment, they have to record new numbers because those lots will no longer exist. So that's the reason for that difference in number. As far as the 44 and 46, I don't know what those are referring to. I'd have to find out what those lot numbers are referring to. I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, like I said, because there's three lots mislisted in the Rosewood subdivision. We're only talking about two. So that's, I know they renumber them. I'm just, don't understand why there's three lots and we're only talking about two.
We do have the applicant here, and it sounds like they can maybe address that question if you'd like.
Okay. And then on the acreage, what is the final acreage that's been calculated on this? Because like I said, in Shannon's report on page 45 of our packet, it says, "The legal description of the combined rezone was not submitted. Future applications need to include a surveyed legal description." Our calculations indicate that the total acreage is 1.635, to be significantly less than the total indicated on the application of 3.05 acres. And so that's a pretty good discrepancy. That's half, almost twice as much land versus what?
Yeah, there has been a legal description submitted now after that preliminary review. If you look at your staff report, let me just see if I can find that legal description. It may be attached to the ordinance is maybe where we want to go. But you can see the acreages there. You'd have to add those up. But I can certainly do those in just a moment. But that had not been provided at the time. It has been provided now. And I can do some quick math.
Well, as long as it's been figured in and we're dealing with the right.
For the current zone change request, it was just something that needed to be submitted and has been now. If you look at that ordinance that is right in front of your staff report, it has those acreages outlined. So.
Okay. Just want to make sure that they were driving because the application was different than what they were calculating, so.
Thank you. Mayor, if you'd like, we can have the applicant address that lot 44 and 46. I honestly don't have a good answer for you on that one, so.
Yeah, please do. You're welcome to come up to this other podium.
Sure. Madam Mayor and Council, appreciate your time. So 44 and 46, that lot on the north, which is now, it's hard to see that. That northern lot of the Rosewood subdivision actually was not a lot in the Rosewood subdivision when that was developed. And so that was lot 46, which is now going to be renamed. And if this motion is approved, it would become a lot within the Rosewood subdivision. And lot 44 is the smaller part that's on the, Chad, can we go back? Where are you showing the, yeah, that map? So.
Is that parcel number, probably?
Correct. Yeah, so 44 and 46 are, as Chad has described, this has been a lot of moving parts. But you can see where we're creating a new parcel for the Rosewood subdivision, a single parcel on the white outline, where there was formerly three lots, it will be two. But there was a requirement to rename the lots or to renumber the lots because of how it was previously written. And then to address your comment on the parcel size, we actually have also purchased a lot across the street. So when we initially submitted, it was a single application and that parcel across the street was included. And that was prior to the new identification, excuse me, for the new lots on the west side.
Any other questions?
Okay. No more questions?
Thank you.
Okay, so that covers all of three then? Because you've talked about the subdivision plat and addressed the 517 South Fort Lane. So I guess just go ahead and go on to number four?
Certainly.
Is what we'll do. Okay. So being that you're there, go for it.
I'll just jump in, yeah.
Yeah, this is an update that we requested some information on regarding our landscape. And then we'll have somebody else talk about another topic.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yeah, I understand there are some questions about the timing of the landscape ordinance amendments that we've anticipated for a little while. I wanted to talk about that. I had asked for your indulgence for just a minute. As we looked at the timing for this particular ordinance, we found it helpful as staff to kind of look at where we're at right now on timing and to look backward just a little bit to kind of see where we've been and how that's impacted some of our timing on some of these amendments. This particular chart that's before you represents a calendar that shows some of the amendments that have occurred in the past and also leading up to some of the things that we're working on right now. The reason that I wanted to talk just a little bit about this is that you'll notice on that left-hand side, we've got several different categories of amendments. As we look at these text amendments, you can kind of divide them into different categories. The first one of those is, as we adopted our general plan in September of 2019, there were amendments to the code that had to take place pretty immediately in order to make our zoning ordinance consistent with our new general plan. One of those you'll remember was the PRUD ordinance. That was a massive effort. This chart doesn't go back far enough to show how far, how many months that was worked on before adoption. This is just a fraction of that amount of time that was spent on the PRUD ordinance. But that was one of the first things that happened after the general plan was adopted, was just to adopt that PRUD ordinance to make our code consistent with some of the new policies of our general plan. Same thing with CTH. We just talked about that a little bit. One of the next things out of the gate was some revisions to our CTH standards to make sure that we were capturing some of those things that were important in terms of design and open space and things that were really important to be adopted as we anticipated that we would now get more applications for CTH, which we have. A third item, which we probably didn't emphasize this component of this as much at the time, but our parking ordinance was actually also a direct reflection of the adoption of our moderate income housing plan. If you remember, the state now requires a few strategies that we have to adopt as part of our moderate income housing plan. One of those choices on the palette was to look at our parking standards to see if there could be some adjustments made that would allow for or help in producing and creating moderate income housing within the city. So that parking ordinance was kind of the next one related to the general plan and the moderate income housing plan that came next. You can kind of see the timing there. There's a couple of different categories as we talk about text amendments. Some of these text amendments are fairly straightforward. There may be one or two lines changed in the code. Those go fairly quickly. Most of the time on those is spent on the required noticing and getting it into the public hearings that have to occur. But there are others that I've listed there as comprehensive that are a much larger effort. Those are items that take months, you know, without question, sometimes years, to get through those because we're changing an entire section of our zoning ordinance. Parking is a good example of that. PRUD was a good example of that. As we move down the list here, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but we also have state mandated changes to our code. You'll see a little blue over here on this side of the screen that's a placeholder for potential changes to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, depending on what happens with our state legislature in the next couple of weeks. But that could be something we need to change fairly quickly. As we move down that list a little bit more, you'll see that there's another category of text amendments that are submitted by citizens. These are folks that come in and request an amendment to our code. They pay a fee. They make an application, and those are applications that we then are required to process. We don't have as much control over when those particular amendments come through, but we do process them. Some of them are approved, some of them are not. You can see some old favorites back there as far as the discussion we had about some of these farm animals and things that came through as a request from property owners. But that just reflects the timing of those and where those came in in relation to some of these other amendments. Now, getting back to our landscape ordinance discussion, we've recently, very recently, completed, again, home occupation ordinance changes that were very important, especially with the pandemic, to get some more clarity for what could happen with home occupations. That was something that was prioritized by staff. These are all in the category of city-initiated text amendments. You'll notice there's not really any meaning to these colors except for one color. This kind of dark orange here on the bottom part of this slide, that, all of those amendments are related to issues that came up about this time last year, if you remember, where we had concerns about some of our developments. We had concerns about grading, drainage, concerns from citizens. We've got concerns about some of our steep slope loss, sensitive lands issues. That first one, you adopted just about a month ago, a little bit over a month ago, which was our comprehensive review of all of our Title 15, 18, and 19. It's all of our development standards. We looked at all of those. We spent, you can see, we spent about 11 months as a staff going through that in detail. Came back with a comprehensive amendment of that ordinance to create some consistency. And then the next ones that are a part of that are an amendment to our sensitive lands ordinance. That was something we identified that needed to occur in support of that same, those same concerns that came up from that group of citizens. And then also, kind of in the wings would be an amendment to our private subdivision development standards, including our street standards. So all those are related. They all tie into that same bundle of concerns. And that kind of leads us back to where we started, which is our landscape amendment. So we actually have done a bit of work on this. This was started back in late July, early August. We were able to obtain an intern from one of our local universities. He had some supervised research that he did over the last several months of several codes, different codes throughout the Western United States, looking at conservation standards, looking at examples of what other cities have done, best practices. Those, the summary of his findings were presented to a group of staff, including our engineering staff, planning staff, just several weeks ago. That, so we're about, in the timeframe, we're about in this range right now, February, March range. You can kind of see our projected timeframe for that. We have on our next planning commission agenda, a discussion of his findings, which would be followed up in March with an actual draft ordinance that would go to a work session and be discussed at that work session. That would be followed up again with a public hearing and then with, of course, coming forward to the council for review. I gave you each a sheet that's up, that's on the dais. It's a little summary of some of those amendments that I just talked about. As part of that, at the bottom, you'll see that proposed schedule for that landscape ordinance amendment. We're at a place where we can, you know, we've got a lot of the research. The initial research has been done. We're at a place where we can move that forward to the planning commission and city council within the next several weeks. We would anticipate that we would be bringing it to you for a work session mid-April, potentially earlier than that, but probably mid-April for a work session with the council after we go through the planning commission process and talk with them about that. One other thing I wanted to point out on that sheet is that below it, there are some future items that we've identified. And these are just for your information. These are items that are on our radar screen, but because of other text amendments that we've prioritized, we haven't got to these items yet. One of those is storage containers in residential zones. We need to look at that as an issue. Another is short-term rentals. That's another one that comes up and that, you know, would be good for us to address. And then we have a need to do a comprehensive sign ordinance. And this one would be a longer-term project. But a comprehensive sign ordinance amendment is needed to bring our sign code into current standards. We've got some things that are out of date, some things that are inconsistent, some things that are not addressed. We did a little one, if you remember, we did a little agricultural sign amendment just a little while ago. That was something we figured we could get done to help an applicant very quickly. But we do need to do a comprehensive sign code change. So with that, that's our schedule. Those are the things we've been working on. I wanted to point out one other thing. If you look at that chart up there, you've got the MU and MUTOD Design Standard Amendment. As you're aware, we've had a lot of applications for mixed-use zoning in the last several months. This was something that was identified a long time ago by us as something we needed to tighten up our design standards, landscape standards, all those things for mixed-use and MUTOD. We've been working on that for a while. We've prioritized it in the last several weeks. That's something that will be running concurrently with this landscape discussion. But it is something that's, again, a very large effort. We've had some initial research, which is kind of that light gray. We've had some very dedicated time to that ordinance in the last month or so, a month or two. And we anticipate that'll come forward about that same timeframe, maybe a little bit after the landscape ordinance, but about that same timeframe. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can. That's some of the things that we've been working on. Oh, I almost failed to do this, and this is for my staff's sake. I want to just mention that with each of these text amendments, you can see that it's not unusual for us to have five or six of these going at the same time in various stages. This is just a small portion of the work that our planning staff does. They're also balancing applications for zone changes, applications for building permits, the subdivisions, site planner reviews, conditional use permits, all the other types of applications. So again, this represents a the other types of applications. So again, this this represents a portion of the the good work that they do. But they they do fit these the work on these amendments in as they can with these other important things they do, including review of building permits, site plans, conditional use permits, et cetera. So, okay, I've talked enough. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Chad, just a couple of of questions, maybe clarifying the sensitive lands ordinance or the sensitive lands amendments. That's being worked on simultaneously. Let's not be because it says they're pending. That means you're not pending to start. It means it's it's in.
We started in earnest on that in January. We have a committee that that was just after we adopted those other, the first round. We started in January. We've got a committee that consists of engineering and planning staff, but it's being worked on right now. We met about it this week. So.
And secondly, the short-term rental that you have down here is future items. There's some short-term rental language in the in the ADU bill that might affect that as well.
That's right. Yeah, we've we've been watching that one very closely. And at this point, which is what a lot of cities have, how a lot of cities have approached these short-term rentals is that they're they're not permitted or prohibited at this point in the city. We we address concerns through the the nuisance complaint process. But that gives us the ability, when we do adopt some standards, to make them apply to everybody because we don't prohibit or or permit them at this point. So.
And just lastly, just also want to applaud the your staff. I mean, obviously, here at the city council, but also as my my experience in the planning commission, they're they get after it. And the fact that we can do all of this and still be within the 14-day and the three-day stuff that Gary was talking about and not be a city that's behind and being looked down upon by the state legislature is a it's just a good thing that we're have a great reputation. So thank you for all that you're doing and and your staff as well.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thanks, Clint. Any other questions that I can answer?
No, just along those same lines. I'm sure the sign ordinance is going to come into play also with what's in front of the legislature. So.
Yeah, yeah, that's it's it's a it's a big effort.
That may determine a lot of our a lot of our decisions.
So Chad, just preliminary on the landscape ordinance, are you seeing major changes, just minimal changes? What kind of?
The research that that our intern did indicated that there could be some some pretty, you know, pretty large changes to some of our commercial landscape standards that, you know, that would be consistent with what a lot of communities have done to try to encourage low-water use. One thing that we've noted is that in each of those ordinances, there's a lot of latitude still given to single-family residential as far as rather than being very highly regulatory, they give options and let people decide for themselves on those lots. So so it's a little bit more, I guess, that we've seen a lot more regulation for commercial and industrial-type applications of landscaping and a little bit more of a palette of options given for people in residential settings rather than being, you know, very prescriptive in what what has to happen there. But to that to that end, yeah, I think the the commercial standards, you'll see a fairly big change that we'll be proposing with, again, with some good discussion, we hope, about residential and how how we want to handle that particular part of it. When I say residential, I'm talking about single-family residential, not not multifamily. Multifamily, we would lump into that same commercial kind of category. But single-family, certainly, most most of the ordinances that that we researched were very, again, more more of a an approach of here's a palette of options you have for a single-family residential home, and you can choose from these options. So.
Okay, that being said, I would just encourage the council to keep track of it as it's going through the planning commission because there's no reason that we have to wait till they approve it to give our questions to them. It would just speed up things if we have questions to feed it to them as they're going.
Yeah, to us as staff, we would welcome any questions you have and any any things you'd like us to consider as part of the the review. I know, you know, park strips would be part of our review as we as we look at these things and how we handle park strips. And we're also, we've got folks that we were based in Water Conservancy District that we're going to be working very closely with for best practices. So.
And as you all know, you can always attend those meetings and their discussions.
As long as there's only two of you.
No.
Well, I guess.
You're just attending. You can attend.
Okay. And so if we have more than two attending, we're okay. They just can't discuss anything, correct?
Yes.
I'll discuss that a little bit when we get out.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good.
Any other any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Chad. We appreciate it. It's a lot of work that you and your staff has put into that. So again, thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay, so as a part of item four, we'll continue on to part two, which would be the water agreement. And Gary Crane's going to give us an update there.
Do you have a PowerPoint you need to?
Yes.
What's the what's the name of?
I either need to bring my glasses or I need to close.
It's okay. You can sit here and I can't read it.
Can I approach? What do I get? The worse it gets. So, thank you. That's big enough. That is. So, just in answer to your question that you had a second ago as to whether or not, there's no problem with the city council attending planning commission meetings. That's not a problem at all. If you want to engage with the planning commission and you all want to be together and hear the same information, which would probably be my recommendation to you, what what is really good is to do what you did with the general plan and have planning commission, city council get together in a meeting, you know, to discuss those issues and find out where they're at. That's essentially what that's the easiest and best way of doing it. That way, you don't have to bring back to the council everything that happens, but you can actually get a total update. But attending the meetings, no problem. You can attend those. Participation in those meetings, you got to be careful because if there's a group of you and you're having to make a decision on that, and you've got three of you there, then, you know, if you deliberate, if you get up to them and deliberate and say something, and then, you know, maybe Zach gets up and says something, you're actually deliberating over a decision that you're ultimately going to have to make. So it's good to listen and get that input. It's good to be together with the planning commission and get that input. I strongly recommend that on something as complicated as that. But as far as, you know, being an active participant, you have a lot of influence over a planning commission that is appointed by by the mayor. So be careful of that. Any questions on that? Is that is that okay? Okay. You guys do it right anyway. So we're good. Just a question regarding Case Creek irrigation and the Leyton City agreement. You know, years ago, one of my first jobs, when I was a fairly new attorney in West Valley, was I remember another attorney was handling Case Creek Irrigation Company and said, you know, I've got such a heavy load. Would you mind handling it? And I remember saying, sure, that ought to be easy. A little company, you know, we'd no problem. And so I came up here and I remember the very first thing we did was we went over to Junior Green's, his house. He opened up his garage and he went up into the roof of the garage. And there's all these like scrolls, these these plats were all rolled up. And that was essentially Case Creek Irrigation Company. That was all of their information that they had. And so he pulls one out, rolls it out on top of the pickup truck, and then wanted to know, you know, why Leyton had cut his line here and why they'd done this. It was it was one of the most frustrating experiences of my life to to represent Case Creek Irrigation Company for a very short time. But I'm glad to say that since that time, things have have improved considerably. You've got a board that appears to be very, very efficient. You've got a director that seems to be doing a very, very good job at directing. But the difficulty with Case Creek Irrigation Company is the difficulty that you'll eventually see with all of the secondary water companies in Leyton. There's another one, Holmes Creek. And then you've got Davis Weaver and the concerns there. And that is that when the older these get, the less, the lower the value of the thing, and the more it ends up in being a cost versus any type of value. The value is in the water, is in the actual water that these companies provide. The value is not in the infrastructure that they put in the ground. And there's millions of dollars worth of infrastructure that has been put in the ground and will need to be put in the ground at some point into the future. Three years ago, when we met together and the master plan was put together for water in Leyton City, we determined that we had one of the greatest resources of any city in the Wasatch Front by having these irrigation companies that essentially had water set aside and and put aside specifically for use within Leyton City. What a great thing. And then not only that, but we have three reservoirs that holds that water, that hold that water. And so we can distribute it on a on a very calculated basis. Those are great resources. You don't have them in very many other cities. I don't know another city that has that benefit. So the question was, and years ago, was how do we pull all this together so that in the future, when as these companies disappear, essentially, which is what they end up in doing, as the agricultural uses disappear, the residential uses come in, and the residential uses just are interested in just getting water during the summertime, getting pressurized water during the summertime. I'm going to take this off because it keeps slipping. But so what we determined was that we will wait. And on a gradual basis, as these companies essentially run out of agricultural use and begin to become almost totally pressurized, that we would take those opportunities to then incorporate those those companies into our water system. I wish I could put a Gantt chart up there like Chad did and tell you this is exactly when this is going to happen for Holmes Creek, for Davis Weaver, for for Case Creek, but I can't. But I can tell you this. I can tell you that we have been working with Case Creek over the last couple of years to develop at least a relationship and an agreement with Case Creek Irrigation Company that covers a number of key areas in preparation for our taking over the Case Creek system. That's not a hostile takeover. It is a taking over of the expenditures, that the things, the costs that will essentially be borne by the city in improving the system, in making it better, and in providing new citizens out west, water that will essentially supplement our culinary supplies and make our culinary supplies go a lot farther, 100% farther. We've got a lot, when you've got a company that has over 3,000, the ability to serve over 3,000 new residents or residential units, that's a considerable asset to the city. And so we have been working since the day that the city decided to do this with Case Creek Irrigation Company. And Case Creek Irrigation Company has been working with us in order to bring us to the point where we can actually begin to to sign an agreement and put together an agreement that that will work for both the city and Case Creek Irrigation. So what I wanted to do is give you the high points of that agreement. I can tell you this, that they have hired a lawyer. David Wright is one of the best lawyers in the state when it comes to water lawyer, water law. We have our team working on it. We have Steve, our engineer, Terry Coburn, our public works director. And I need to introduce you to Mason Carr, who's, I don't know what to say about him, except he's fabulous. He comes to us from Par Brown, and he comes with a lot of experience in the area of water. In fact, David knew him when he walked in the door. And so Mason has been working with us, and we're happy to have him and grateful for his input on this, on on a very complicated, very complicated agreement. During my 30 years here at Leyton City, I've I've put together a lot of agreements, but this is probably one of the most complicated because on the other side, it's not as easy. It's not a unilateral ordinance that we're putting into place that you can do tomorrow or within a year or within. You've got a company that essentially has has some pieces of it that are as disorganized as it was when Woody Green opened up his garage and took took all the the scrolls out of the top and showed me where they were, where different things were. I have to depend a lot on the people that were actually here when a lot of these things occurred in order to come up with some of the conclusions as to where these where these shares and where these shares are and what types of shares they are. So I'm going to go through what we've negotiated so far, and we've not come to a conclusion. And we've gotten to a point where staff is going over some of the recommendations that the attorneys have made on both sides. An agreement has gone, has bounced back and forth. I would term it more as a term sheet than an actual final agreement because it's not final until you see it and you say, yeah, that's great. And their board sees it and says, yeah, that's great. That works, works for us. Then, in addition to that, we have their stock shareholders that we have to deal with as well, that both the company and Leyton City will have to to deal with, to, when I say deal with, will have to make accommodations for. So if you take a look, the first piece of the agreement is kind of what they call a preparatory step to entering into an agreement. First of all, we got to get our thing together. We got to understand where all the shares are, what they are. When I bought my lot, I've got, I was told I have an acre of water on my lot. But I never did get a an actual paper share for that water. And the majority of my neighbors are exactly the same way. They did not get an actual piece of paper when they bought their property. It's somewhere, it's probably at Case Creek Irrigation Company somewhere, but none of us have physical shares that are recorded. And for the majority of my neighbors, they don't really care. All they care is that when they turn the faucet on for secondary water, that they get water. And if they don't, Case Creek really hears about it. Case Creek Irrigation hears about it. And right now, Case Creek's a company of two, two individuals that try to keep up with all of this. And so it's it's quite a remarkable thing that they've been able to do that. It's also a remarkable thing that they've been able to expand in some of the ways that we're going to talk about in a second. But we have to establish the ownership. That's on them to do that. And they're going back and they're they've done that. They've done quite a bit of work on doing that. And we we feel we know where all the the shares are located and who owns them. And there are some questions. For example, over the years where we have actually treated shareholders like they were shareholders, where they don't actually have a physical share, what is their status? That's a complicated legal issue, but it's one that we're having to deal with, with Mr. Wright. And accounting for all the shares, making sure that all the shares are accounted for, what are the rights of each of the shareholders? Are they all the same or are they different? When a person carves up a piece of property into four lots, now what happens to the share of water that was over those four lots? Those are complicated issues that they have to deal with because the thing that we will need before we actually strike the iron, strike the anvil, is we need to know who the shareholders are because those shareholders are going to have to make a decision. And it's going to be a big decision. It's going to be relative to the transfer of of assets, the company's assets into the city's name. So we have been working on, they have been working on this end of it, and we've been assisting them in working on each of the aspects that you see right there. Did you have a question?
I do, Gary. Just, so how far do you have to, do you feel like you have to go back on that?
You know, Case Creek's almost 100-year-old company, and those rights are really, really old. That's what makes them so valuable. So we're having to go back as far as we possibly can to find those paper shares. If we can't find the paper shares, there's an accommodation for that in state law that we can actually use to be able to just indicate that those shares no longer exist or they don't exist, and the company would be the owner of those, there would be no shares. The company would be the owners of those rights or those shares.
So would that would that, I guess, include, I know one person who said that their shares, they just don't know where they are through the family, right, as it's handed down?
Yeah.
So would they trace those back as well?
Yeah, they do have records that go all the way. Those are the types of things that we're having to to deal with. That's what's, that's what's taking a lot of the time that you're, you know, that you identified, we're working on it. And and they're working on it, working furiously on that. But that's one of the issues that they'll have to resolve, exactly that. And there's a couple of situations like that where they know they've got it. They just don't know where it is. That, you know, the family doesn't know where it is. That sounds very familiar, actually. It sounds like one that that we're aware of. So that's that's what we're having to do. That's that's part of what we're having to do.
They have to provide then all of the shareholders, even though, like you say, it might be a quarter of a share or a full share, that entire list? Is that what, or at least identify all of them so we have an exact accounting of it?
Yes, we need to know who they are. And if we don't know who they are, there's a way of dealing with that, as I indicated. But by the by the end, that preliminary step of finding the shareholders, a majority of the shareholders, and according to their bylaws, turning the assets of the company over to another entity, to the city, will require a resolution of the shareholders and the shareholders must approve that resolution. And that resolution right now is and has been in drafting with David, David Wright. And we've been preparing the shareholders. We've had at least one meeting with, I had one meeting before COVID with the shareholders where we actually told them a little bit about how that would work. We've had multiple meetings with the board to demonstrate, to talk about how that would work with David here as well. And so those are the things that we're having to, to process and to get completed. Those are out of our control, but are in their control. And there are two resolutions. One would be the resolution authorizing the transfer and the other would be a resolution extinguishing or conveying the shares to Leighton City. Leighton City will be the owner of all shares necessary to handle the pressurized system. And that's probably close to 95% of the shares in the company. So that's, that's a big deal and that's, that's a big preliminary hurdle that we've got to, to, to cross and we've got to, got to be able to handle that.
So Gary, just one quick question there. So say a family owns shares, 20 years ago, they stopped paying assessments on it. Do they, do they have a provision where after so many years of non-payment of assessment, it reverts back to the company to solve some of those problems or?
Yes. Yeah. Those, I go to my expert, but there is a solution in state law for individuals who have not paid their assessments.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would clear up some of those, I'm sure.
That's, I think you're right. Yeah. And then the transfer of the pressurized system. We have to enter, and our engineering department has been hot on, on getting everything recorded, knowing where everything is prior to the transfer. That has to occur. We have to, and, and that's an interesting thing because right across the back of my yard is a pipe that I found with a water witch one day as I was looking for a leak. And, and there's a lot of those. If, you know, on the east side, Case Creek has a lot of lines that do not run in our streets. And we're used to, you know, when the city puts together a system, we put together a system where the lines are located in the street. Over time, I think a lot of those will be relocated into the street. That's, I'm going to leave that to Steve. That's his problem, okay? And, and Wes, I think, who, Wes Adams, who actually runs the water system, I'm sure he has nightmares over what we're going to do to him in a very short time. But we have to provide, first of all, an indication where all the infrastructure is and then we have to know where the easements are and those easements have to be conveyed to the city, both prescriptive and actual easements. They all have to be conveyed to the city. Everything from the dam, other than the ditches, and there's only about four or five ditch, you know, ditch folks that, that are left, all those easements have to be conveyed to the city. And so we've been working on that and we've, we're making good progress on that.
So most of those old companies, a lot of those easements were never recorded, right? You're going to have to record all those now?
What they would do is they would, they will assign their rights, whether they be prescriptive or actual, to us. And so the city can actually pursue them if they need to. But if they don't need to, you know, if they're just easements that don't have anything in them, we can, we can let them go. If they do have pipes in them, it may be that the city decides that we want to firm those up and actually make them, you know, define where they are. And we're actually doing that with every development that comes in. We actually require the development to identify on the plat where those easements are and to assign those easements a width and a, and a location.
What about all the ones that are, like you stated a minute ago, that this, we know a lot of them are in the backyards?
Yes. And the answer is yes. We're going to have to deal with all of those.
But, but you could probably transfer the assets and deal with that later because you've, you've got that prescriptive easement because there are pipes there, correct?
That's correct. So the, the agreement will essentially say that they convey everything to us and so they will do that. There's a method of doing that through agreement and through transfer, just transferring in the agreement. Next one, loans and contracts. Weber Basin is a major contract that we want to make sure we don't lose as this transaction occurs because they actually use a considerable amount of Weber Basin water in the spring and, and throughout the summer, whenever they get low, they'll, they'll use that water. They trade, Weber Basin trades with Case Creek. We don't want to lose those agreements. We want to make sure they're assignable. So we've been looking at that and making sure with their attorney that those are assignable to us or that we may be able to take some of them over. We've had that opportunity before with Weber Basin to do transfer agreements and they've actually let us take them over. The reason they're important is because they're extremely, they're, they're good price is what they are. And so we want to make sure that that good price stays in place because we don't want bare river water price, right? We want the actual price that Case Creek pays or exchanges for those rights. Loan, there's a loan on the pressurized system. When Scott decided to expand and go out west, which is great, it's, that's the whole reason that it's so profitable for us to use this company. When I say profitable, I'm talking water-wise, where it's so beneficial for us to use it is because we do have those lines going out west. And those lines come at the cost of a loan that was made from the Division of Water Resources and that loan, we would assume because it, it's entirely pressurized. So we've got to make accommodations to assume that loan or to assume payment of the loan. And it's looking right now like, more like we will assume payment on the loan because the company will continue to exist, but we'll just assume payment on the loan. Really quickly, reservoirs, those are an incredible asset to the city, not only for their water and their ability to hold water, but in the future for the ability of the city to own those reservoirs. We would look to, in the, in the agreement, a process for eventually when there is no more agricultural use, for having those water, those reservoirs turned over to the city for, and, and we're going to have to work that, that's a detail that we still have to work out. There are a lot of associated agreements with those reservoirs. You've got with the Division of Water Resources, Wildlife Resources, the fish, the fishery, the hatchery, that type of thing, those, those agreements all have to be assumed by Leighton City, once those reservoir, if we do take over the reservoirs. But until then, they have to be maintained and those agreements have to be administered. And so we would see to that. Representation, we've got a recommendation as to how the board would be set up, but we'll explain that to you another time and we got a lot of time to do that. But that was a big one, is where does the power lie to make decisions regarding the water, the reservoirs? Pressurized system, certainly us, but the water and the reservoirs, that still concerns us because if we don't control the water in the reservoir, we can't continue to keep the pressurized system charged. So we have to have considerable control over that. The assessments, agricultural and pressurized users, they need to be fair to both. And so that's been a source of conversation between us and the board, is how should those costs be allocated between agriculture, the last agricultural users and, and the pressurized users? Leighton will own 95% of the system. And so we have a big say in how those assessments are made and, and what those assessments should be. But we also want the agricultural users to have a say in that. Priority water use, not that difficult because we're trying to pattern this agreement as much as we can after the Weber Basin agreement that we've got in place that services over 4,000 connections. And so we kind of have a pattern for doing this. And Weber Basin, their management plan seems to work and probably will work for this. And I'm just going to really hop real quick. Operations, Case Creek still has to be operated. It will still have an employee or maybe two that manage the dams and keep the dams clear. So, and then there's training for our employees that has to take place. And we look at, at doing that as soon as this spring, beginning to train our employees this spring in, in, in the Case Creek system. Long-term plan for the dams, the water rights and the ownership interests of both of those is defined in the agreement as well. And what we've recommended is that we get together with you to show you what we've done so far in putting together the agreement. Staff still wants another couple of shots at it. We received, we were going really, really well and very, very quickly until COVID hit. But the, the main thing that has to be performed before we can go any farther is for a resolution to be drafted and presented to the shareholders. That was shut down last January, February. In, in that area, we were going to actually hold a, a meeting where the shareholders could actually look at the resolutions and, and make a decision on them. We're not going to be able to do that. We're going to have to figure out another way of doing that, but that's Case Creek that will need to do that. And then the liabilities and dispute resolutions mechanism. We've got an idea for that too, that is in a format of an agreement. We will spend time with you in a work session, I think, explaining all these things to you. Any questions that you might have regarding, I mean, there's a thousand questions because we have a thousand questions, but we want you to know that we're, this has not stopped. It is a gradual process because you're dealing with a, a willing but cautious other party and represented by counsel. And so they're getting good counsel. That's a big thing. You know, things go smoother when you've got a good attorney on the other side, on both sides. And so if there's any questions, I can answer real quick for you so that we don't, Oprah, run you?
Gary, just one thing and staff, I know that, again, I appreciate your attention here and really diving into this because I know it's a precious resource that we, we need to deal with. But as we move along, obviously we will have a work session, but I really believe that it would behoove this body here if we can also set up a tour and actually be able to go out and see the entire water system. I know that, you know, we've got several tanks up on the side, but then also show how the reservoirs will come into play, where you plan on putting in the main trunk line and that. I think that would help them as they go forward with this decision as well. So I'm not saying right now, I'm just saying that's something that I'm going to request that we do that.
Bring your, we'll likely do that in the spring. That's a great idea.
Yeah, or even summertime. I mean, I'm sure this isn't going to be done that quick, but, but I do want to have a physical.
But we want you to know, we are pushing this forward as fast as they will move.
Thank you.
And so there are some things that, that are hurdles that we have to get over before we can go to the next step. And one right now is we've got to get those shareholders together. And we've been doing a lot of footwork, you know, groundwork on that. But now we need, now it's time for the meeting. We're coming really close to the time for the meeting and to get that started.
My, Gary, would be to meet with us because I may not be in agreement with what you're presenting to them.
Okay.
So where you're negotiating on beside, on behalf of the city, I think it would be good to have a meeting with the council to say, yeah, the things you're presenting, we agree with or we don't.
Yeah, just so you know, we would never move forward.
Yeah, but I mean, even in, even in some of the preliminary stuff, to save you going down this road when we don't agree with that, for instance.
Okay. We'll do that. Certainly we'll do that.
One more question.
Quick question, Gary. This is, this came from the discussion of the water rate increase and the infrastructure that needs to be put in place out, out west to, like you, like you mentioned in the beginning of the presentation to help with the culinary water demand or supply. So how much of the infrastructure, the projects, I mean, we postponed this decision to raise the water rates, how much of the, of those projects, the secondary projects are connected to this agreement, to this right here, that Case Creek water?
Maybe I could have our engineer respond.
That's, this is the reason for, this is, okay.
This is why we would use to finish that.
I just wanted to get that on the record, that that's what we're, what we need to do.
And the sooner the better.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be absolutely all of them. There's a small amount with, with Holmes Creek, but it would be the majority by far.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. There is, go ahead.
Yeah, if I could, like Tom said, there are a few that are specific to maybe Holmes Creek or Davis Weaver, but the vast majority of them would be part of the system out west that all three companies could feed into. So it would be the majority of all the projects.
Thanks. So, and maybe I just make this point, that we've got to move this forward, they have to move it forward, we have to move it forward. And to, to your point, Tom, their shareholders are probably going to give them the same permission you're giving me. And that is that they'll do a resolution. The resolution will provide for the transfer of those, of Case Creek's shares to the city predicated on the, the finalizing of an agreement between the city and, and the company. You'll give me permission to negotiate an agreement that is acceptable to you as we move forward with this so that we can move both sides together. There's nothing in those two resolutions that would supersede what you do here. In other words, they're not going to be able to say, we're going to go ahead and rush forward with the plan without Leighton City approving the plan. You have to approve the plan. And so, but the problem is we, we've both got to move together. It's like two gunslingers that are both, you know, just kind of waiting for the other one to draw. So I hope that's, you understand, we got to move both sides.
Yeah, I understand that, but, but from my perspective, there's a few things that I can see from the city side that I don't agree with yet, now, to redirect you so when you do present it, you would have my agreement.
Yeah, and I agree with that. And ultimately, you'll have to approve whatever agreement we put together. So you, you as a council will have to do that. So hopefully, the underlying premise of incorporating Case Creek into our water system, you decided that three years ago. So it's just how we do it is what we're looking at and what, what's involved in doing it. But whether or not to do it, that decision's been made. It's a good decision. I think it's a good decision because I don't know where you get that much water. I just don't. They're just not making, although the last couple of days, I think there's probably a possibility that somebody's making water for us. So anyway, is, so I want to, I'm not meaning to make like, make light of it, but I think it's a good decision to move forward. It's just, you're talking about the details of how to do that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, because the master plan was agreed on, but it could move forward with Case Creek operating independently of the city in the future or not. That's where the agreement, so that's where the agreements have to come, be agreed on by everybody.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Okay, well, counsel, we're right at one minute before the hour. We'll bring this meeting to a close and allow you to stand up, stretch, if you need to take a quick break. Go ahead and I'll wait for you to return.